I didn't want to be the only one going the other way.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to open this meeting on March 24th with a salute to the flag, and I believe the flag is to my right and to your left.
[inaudible]
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Town Clerk, would you kindly read the roll, please?
Councilwoman Edwards?
Here.
Councilwoman Edwards Dearest?
Here.
Councilwoman Durfee?
Here.
Councilwoman Carroll?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Costa?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Bowlin?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Ruder is absent.
Mr. Bowlin, would you kindly read the consent agenda tonight?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of approval of the minutes of the regular town council meeting, March 10th, 2008, approval of executive session minutes, March 10th, 2008, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions: Cemetery Commission, Economic Development --
Hold on, yeah, yeah.
-- Economic Development Commission, Waste Water Management Commission. Correspondence received and filed: Received from Town of Portsmouth regarding resolution School Housing Project Cost Amendment to Rhode Island General Law 16744; Received from Armenian National Committee of Rhode Island Regarding Flag Raising on April 24th; Received from City of Warwick Resolution Related to House Bill 7108 Prohibitive Language in Collective Bargain Agreements Identifying a Specific Medical Insurance Company; Received from City of Warwick Regarding Countrywide Governmental Services; Received from City of Warwick Resolution Regarding Statewide E-911 System; Received from Town of Boroughville Resolution Opposing H-7448 Relating to Parks and Recreation Areas Public Use of Private Lands Liability Limitations; Received from Town Clerk Correspondence Place and Council Boxes on March 14, 2008; Received from Town Administrator from Dan Beardsley Executive Director, Rhode Island League of Cities and Towns Regarding H-7204 Corruler Act: Approval of Tax Assessor Abatements, Approval of Tax Assessor Board of Review Abatements, and John Lynn Court Waste Water Collection Superintendent Request Authorization for Town Administrative Application Documents and Seek $300,000 in Financing for Septic System Repairs Through the CSSLP.
Are there any changes to the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to have item CA3C, one item in G, and --
Are we going to remove CA6?
And we're going to -- and CA6.
Okay. I also wanted to remove one item in G. Anything else? All those in favor, then, of the --
Motion to approve.
Yes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. All those opposed? All those abstaining? Now, taking up the first item, Mr. Edwards?
The City of Warwick has sent us a resolution, their city council, supporting House Bill 7108 as regards health insurance and being able to negotiate health insurance with various health insurers. I think I make a motion that we urge our legislators, both representative and both senators, to support this resolution on behalf of the Town of Tiverton.
Is that a motion to that effect?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. I believe that was unanimous. Next item in G. You did think that that was rather a curious spelling of -- in the -- in G.
I just had a couple of questions of the town administrator/treasurer on the monthly revenue and budget reports concerning his note about overtime about the police and fire departments. If I'm correct, I see we're approximately on track to exceed both the police department by -- I'm sorry, the fire department by $67,000 and the police department by $54,000 if we continue on the track we are. Is that correct?
Yeah, we will be exceeding the amount that's been appropriated. You have a transfer later on in the docket to cover the police department, and at your next meeting, there will be a transfer request for the fire department.
Is there anything being addressed with either department as far as trying to limit overtime for the remaining quarter?
We are looking at it, but right now, a lot of it is caused by contract language.
I mean, I read the police department's item further on explaining why he had overtime in his department, and it appeared that that overtime would be ending or has ended.
As far as minimum manning in the control center, that's coming to an end, although one of our control center operator clerks just resigned, so we have to look for another one, so it may continue for a little bit.
So we'll be incurring more overtime there. Madam President, if you want to --
Yes, Jim's going to --
While we're in G, we did receive a rather lengthy response from Mr. Williams, Director
of DOT, and first, I thought that letter should be acknowledged, that we have received it, that we will be making appointments to that committee this evening, and that the committee members, once appointed, should get a copy of this letter from the council so that everybody will be on the same page with regard to it. It was a very lengthy response, so I realize this is a public document, but it would be helpful to have everybody who is working on this to have the same information. So I'd just like to ask that the clerk respond where they -- that we have received it, we are acting upon it, the town solicitor, too, will be in touch with Akasim Fahuman, and proceed to implement an agreement with the input of the committee. So I don't think we need a motion to that effect, we will just proceed on that basis. Now, going to item number six.
I understand from the town administrator that they wish to withdraw this item. Is that correct?
Yes.
Withdraw or continue?
Either withdraw or continue. There's one clause in there that we would like to review with the Waste Water Management Commission.
So I'd make a motion that we continue this item.
Is there a second to that motion?
No. Are we continuing to a date or just --
To our next meeting.
Next meeting.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries. Okay. We will now move to our public hearings, and the first public hearing is in connection with the Church Community Housing, our second public hearing with regard to the block grant program. Mr. Ostegui, are you here?
He may take it tonight, but I'm in Church Community Housing.
Okay. Yes, please come up here, identify yourself and --
Christian Balden with Church Community Housing Corporation. So this is the second hearing for the 2008 Community Development Block Grant application and the purpose -- Is this better?
Yep.
So this is the second hearing for the 2008 Community Development Block Grant application. The purpose of the public hearings are to get the input from the residents of Tiverton on the application that's going up to the state on April 17th. So if any of the residents have any comments or opinions that they'd like to express, this is the opportunity to do so. And then the only other thing that I'd like to add is that, in addition to holding the public hearing, once it's closed, the town council should vote at this time to submit the application to the state, and if you wanted to change the prioritization of the activities that are being applied for, that you could also do that.
We will open the public hearing, as I did, and receive any additional comments from the public with regard to the proposal. It has been amended from our prior public hearing, and certain things have been added to that, including the senior citizens' roof. So does anybody wish to be heard on this proposal?
Do you go over that list now? Maybe I don't have to say anything. I guess I need you guys out of the citizen's room. I think that should be included.
Mr., I won't have you come to the microphone, but we will -- this is -- this was part of the agenda, and I hate to take the time because I know people are here on zoning, but it is for -- I'll do this quickly. Public facilities provide improvements for street sidewalks and extension of sewer lines in an area described, amount 163. Provide funding to support the replacement of the roof of the Tiverton Senior Center, 29,000. Support East Bay Community Action Plan to carry out renovations at their Head Start Facility, amount 5,000. Support for the Women's Resource Center of Newport and Bristol Counties to provide counseling and advocacy services to victims of domestic violence, 5,000. For housing development, provide funding to the Women's Resource Center for the acquisition of property to be used for transitional housing to serve victims of domestic violence, amount 10,000. Provide public services, support for the housing hotline of Newport County to provide housing counseling and referral services, 2,000. And then Church Community Housing Corporation operating costs, regional revolving loan fund, homeowners assistance, Rhode Island housing, home repair programs, commercial rehab, foreclosure prevention, neighborhood revitalization, and planning, amount 25,000. Housing operating. Provide operating support to the Community Housing Land Trust of Rhode Island for technical assistance, training, and monitoring of affordable housing units, amount 3,000. Acquisition. Provide funds to Church Community Housing Corp. to help support the creation of 50 affordable housing opportunities as proposed in the Sandy Woods Farm Plan and the Tiverton Affordable Housing Plan, amount 200,000. Planning. Provide funds to develop a neighborhood streetscape and commercial revitalization plan for the area bounded by State Street, Fisher Road, Hooper Street, and Main Road, amount 10,000. Town administration, 8,000. That's the proposal. The council ready for a motion on this? Is there anybody -- I don't see any further hands raised, so I will close the public portion of this hearing.
I make a motion that we accept the funding allocations and for the items as laid out on the 2008 Community Development Block Grant.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. That meeting is closed and final. The next is a public hearing for the amendment of the zoning map and the zoning ordinance. And if the planning board would like to just -- if you wish to say a few words before I ask the public to speak, by all means, I will invite you to do so.
Noel Berg, Chairman of the Planning Board, sounded more like a request than an invite. I guess the general statement was that the Tiverton Comprehensive Community Plan was updated and approved September 25th, I believe, 2006. Early part of February, the planning board was requested by the council to review the then-current zoning, including the zoning map, to resolve any inconsistencies with the newly-approved community plan update, which we did. And so the general statement would be, what is being proposed tonight is to make the current zoning consistent with that approved community plan update of 2006. Without going into all the detail, I'll try to summarize very briefly. The zoning map changes, there were two primary changes of, one, to change the existing highway commercial, which is located, the portion located on the south side of Souza Road, from highway commercial to medium-density residential. Now, this was originally proposed to do that at the end of, well, say, the year 2000, 2001, because the original community plan, comprehensive community plan, also recommended medium-density residential. That didn't take place. And for the audience's edification, when the plan is updated, there are quite a few subcommittees, many people participate and review the existing plan and come forward with their concerns, et cetera, and then it's reviewed at a public hearing, both by the planning board and by the town council. In this case, it was simultaneous. So it does represent the view of the residents of Tiverton, and by law, the zoning then has to be consistent, and that's what we're trying to do tonight. So the community plan update recommended medium-density residential, and it cited reasons because of traffic, increased traffic, and things like that, and trying to keep, maintain the characteristics of Tiverton as a rural community. So that's the reason, the primary reason, for changing the designated highway commercial, which is shown on these sheets that were included in the Secana Times for advisement for -- during the advertisement, so that the readers could see what's being proposed, and then come to the planning board office for advice and the reasons, and read what is being proposed. The other primary zoning change was correct, an erroneous change in 2001, where an area which had been general industrial right to the Secana was changed to waterfront. The intent was to just bring that to old Main Road. Instead, we went all the way to Main Road, which wiped out existing general commercial. So that change is to correct that mistake, and we created non-conforming situations that we would like to correct. And the third zoning change was an attempt to get all the open space that has been -- that has developed since 2001 and put that on the zoning map. Although I understand there are some problems with some of that open space, may not really want to be open space, an undeveloped area. The text changes, again, what to make the current text consistent with the comprehensive plan update. And without going through all the findings of fact, but in Article II, there are definitions, and in order to better clarify these definitions, and again, to comply with the 2006 Community, Comprehensive Community Plan update, we're recommending specific changes so that there's a distinction made between a retail business office or consumer service complex and a shopping center or a mall. And then also Article IV, which specifies use regulations, which had made a distinction but was not backed up by these definitions, because there was only one definition, so we're proposing breaking out two specific definitions in Article II. And then in Article IV, in essence, we're taking the definition of supermarket shopping centers and excluding them. Just catch up to something. In Article VI deals with unaccepted streets, and it's including recommendations by the then-director of Public Works to better clarify that unaccepted street ordinance and make it a little bit more comprehensive. With Article 18, Enforcement and Administration, there again, the zoning officer requested this change so that the fee for a zoning certificate is set by the town council, not by the zoning officer. And I did omit on Article VI, the unaccepted streets, both the DPW director and the zoning officer felt that a better clarification was needed in the unaccepted street, and it had to do with construction and modification of the unaccepted streets.
Thank you. Now, are there any comments with regard to these proposed amendments? Yes.
Monica Mara. Twenty-three, William. I'm not sure I'm in the right --
You need to --
Yeah, excuse me, you need to get real close to the microphone so everybody can hear you. I'm not sure if I understood what Mr. Roy had said as far as the unaccepted streets. My concern is, I guess it's on the public hearing on the number two, I don't know if it's going to play into this situation here. My concern is the Open Space and Land Preservation Commission, a nature conservatory, and if I'm out of order, please tell me. I've been a resident of this town my whole life, okay? I lived on Park Grant. We have a dispute going on about people trying to make what's a public road into a private road. It's supposed to be a 48-foot road. We have the nature conservatory there, we have the open space there. Rumor tells me that people are trying to shut the public from using this land, okay? And my thing, if we're going to discuss open space, I have the deed that says it's open to all citizens of this town, and to have people put rocks there and try to keep the public out is an outrage to me.
I don't think any of these amendments would affect your situation.
Okay, that's all I'm asking. I just want to be heard.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Scott Spear. I'm here this evening on behalf of James McGinnis, who's the trustee of the Tiverton Associates Trust. The trust is the owner of the property on the south side of Souza Road, which would be the significant portion of real estate that's being rezoned from highway commercial to medium residential, which is an R40, I believe, proposed. Mr. McGinnis has asked me to come here this evening to express his objection to this zone change, as well as to the text changes that are proposed, which would affect the use of certain types of facilities within a commercial zone. Mr. McGinnis owns 43.8 acres of property on Souza Road, presently-zoned highway commercial, and he maintains that rezoning this property at this time is not in the best interest of the community as a taxpayer, and he would argue that it will deprive the town of one of the greatest planning opportunities that the town has available to it today and may ever have in the future. You may know that this morning, Mr. McGinnis, as a trustee, filed with the planning department a substantial master plan application for the development of this property into a retail service complex. The proposal that was filed with the planning department is a significant, significant deviation from the plan that you've previously been exposed to, that was submitted by a mall developer known as New England Development. There is no developer involved with this application. Mr. McGinnis is moving forward on his own initiative, trying to make something profitable and beneficial for the community out of this piece of property. The proposal that was filed with the planning board under a highway commercial zone is a village and main street approach for the use of this property. It is a 247,000-square-foot complex, which is significantly smaller than the proposal of New England Development. Being on a significantly smaller scale will eliminate many of the objections that the planning department, members of the community, expressed during the voluminous hearings with New England Development. Not only will this smaller complex have a reduced impact on traffic, it will also create less impervious surface, will have less significant environmental impacts, will create more opportunities for buffers, greater planning opportunities, it will help preserve the rural and intimate scale of the community through this development proposal, and most importantly and significantly, seven acres of the property will be designated for municipal use, which will allow the Town of Tiverton to consider the construction of a municipal complex, which would include a new town hall, if you're interested in doing that. We have two buildings shown on the plan, one of 10,350 square feet for municipal uses, a second building of 14,308 square feet for municipal uses. We know that the town's planning documents speak repeatedly to the need of police department space, fire department space, town hall space, library space, senior citizen space, space for youth, space for daycare center. The present application tries to take advantage of all of those uses by -- The present application tries to take advantage of all of those uses by presenting to the town a wonderful opportunity through the planning process to place those types of uses in what is considered one of the most significant pieces of property left in the town for planning like this. And we would encourage the town council to show interest in discussing with the application and the applicant what type of use you would like to make in there. We have tried to design this as a Main Street-type of complex, which would incorporate only uses that are presently permitted under a highway commercial zone, and as you may know, municipal buildings are presently permitted on a highway commercial zone, but they're not permitted in a residential zone. So this opportunity would vanish if the property is rezoned. As I stated earlier, this is not a mall or a shopping center. There are no big boxes. There are no large retail centers proposed, no Walmarts, no Lowe's, none of those types of uses that we know the town finds very objectionable. In fact, the largest building on the proposal is only 39,000 square feet, despite the fact that the 40,000-square-foot limitation in your zoning ordinance only applies to shopping centers. But the applicant felt that the town was interested in smaller buildings, so the largest one is only 39,000 square feet. The fact that the buildings are smaller, and this is a smaller scale, is designed to attract more businesses from the local community to this site. You are all familiar with the fact that the town has rezoned much of the Main Street area to limit growth along Main Street. As a matter of fact, one of my clients who's here this evening has expressed frustration with the council in the past over the fact that he can't expand. His property's a non-conforming use. If he wants to get bigger, he has to leave Tiverton. This facility, this proposal, is designed to allow people on Main Street that want to expand to have a place locally where they can expand to. Other businesses that are over there that might not be doing well, that would like a fresh start and a new look, could come up to this new Main Street-type of center and hopefully develop a new business and grow it. We think that the addition of office space in this proposal is a significant improvement over New England Development's proposal as well. The office space is juxtaposed next to the municipal center, so that doctors, lawyers, real estate firms, insurance agencies would all be gathered together in this communal area to create a town center-type of complex. And that type of operation, that type of use, would not be permitted if the zone change goes through. The proposal will not only create opportunities for local businesses, not only satisfy your municipal needs, but will also help enhance the tax town base, which is an opportunity that presents itself that we think is significant, and we know that taxes are always a concern to the citizens, and we think that that's an important consideration. I would also encourage you not to advance the text changes that are proposed tonight until the planning department has an opportunity to completely vet this application. And the reason I suggest that is that it may be that the community determines that a shopping, excuse me, a supermarket would be a good use in this site, and a supermarket is not presently permissible in a highway commercial zone. And it may be that it's the best interest of the community to try to put a supermarket in here. And if that's the case, again, these amendments this evening would ruin those opportunities. And Mr. McGinnis does not see any reason why this particular zone change of this particular piece of property and those text amendments need to be acted upon this evening. I would encourage you to postpone any vote on those two sections until you've all had an opportunity to thoroughly study the application, allow the planning board to study the application, and let's see if we can work together as an applicant, the planning department, and the town council to use this piece of property in a way that will advance everyone's best interest and create a great opportunity in the town that will touch on many people's lives. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spears.
My name is Bernard Giraud. I'm from Fall River, and I'm representing James McGinnis, the owner of Tiverton Land Associates, today. Madam President, council, I'm here to say that Mr. McGinnis opposes the zoning change from highway commercial to residential 40. We would like you to consider the plan that was brought in for application today, because we think that if you consider the economic benefits of it and the fiscal impact of the plan, that you'll find it to be much better than what was already presented to this community more than once. We also think that you'll find that a commercial versus residential use on that particular site, because of its location, access, and visibility and so forth, is a more appropriate use to the land than turning it into a housing subdivision. At great expense, Mr. McGinnis has designed what we would term a neighborhood or lifestyle area, which really takes into account the fact that Tiverton, in and of itself, is a small community. In fact, the name that temporarily has been put on the plan is called Tiverton Crossroads. We believe that if you polled the businesses in and around town, that you would find that they would approve this, that they would rather see highway commercial use than residential use, especially at the scale at which this plan, new plan, was designed. So we would like you to consider that. We also think, for example, that...
(inaudible).
Really? I thought I was right on the microphone, but should I start over?
Speak more closely to it, then.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Should I begin again, or...
No, don't begin again.
All right.
But just keep going.[982.12][982.12](laughter)
But I was closing and really saying that conformity to a plan that might exist doesn't necessarily mean that the decisions that are made relative to a proposal to change the zoning might be correct, that it might be more appropriate to study what's been proposed to the town relative to the new site plan rather than the old. And we thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
My name is Les Corry, and I live at 45 Summit Avenue in Tiverton. Members of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to be with you here this evening, and I want to speak with regard to the proposal from the planning board on the replacing of the verbiage on 104. If you have that document before you, it's on page seven, and replace 104A. Now first, I need to tell you that with the exception of the highway commercial property, which is on Souza Road, I believe that I own the single largest plot within any highway commercial zone in the town, approximately 40 acres, this is up on Canning Boulevard. Now, it seems to me, if I read this correctly, that if I, up in that area, were to own a parcel of, say, an acre or two, that I could, if I wanted to, or at least ask, for approval to have a footprint of a single structure or aggregate structures not to exceed 40,000 square feet. I have no argument against the prohibition of the big box in the area. So far, Home Depot hasn't come to see me, nor has Lowe's or Target, nor do I expect them. But I am concerned about the section that says the total aggregate structures shall not exceed 40,000 square feet. Now, if the parcels were all two or three acres there, then I suppose that might be reasonable, but effectively, this would limit my total use of my property to about 1/40th of it if it were to be used for commercial purposes. The change in the zoning to residential is somewhat interesting to me, since I have been trying to use that property for residential purposes and have been discouraged by this board and others from so doing, because the property was commercial, and I wasn't making the best use of it by trying to use it for residential. But now it would seem that I would have no choice but to use it for residential, since I could only use one acre out of my 40 for commercial purposes. So I would request that you might consider striking the portion that says the total aggregate structures shall not exceed 40,000 square feet, since I think that that would be very injurious to my particular position and probably doesn't influence the position of anyone else in town except me. And I know that the folks didn't intend that. I'd like also to make a comment with regard to page eight, item D of the same document. I'm sorry, item C, with regard to the prohibition of shopping centers, malls, mini-malls, and strip malls. I think most everyone in town is of the opinion that we don't want a mall, but I'm not sure that there are not some places in town, and I don't know that my property is one of them, or it isn't, again, I have no inquiry from anyone along those lines, but I'm not sure that there aren't a few places in town in which a mini-mall or a strip mall might be appropriate. Now, if you adopt the changes that are proposed, and you read across item C, it's going to say N-N-N-N-N-N-N-N-N, which says, "No way, no how in our town do we have a strip mall anywhere." Now, I am told that if someone has an appropriate piece of property and wants a strip mall, then even if it's an N, you can always ask. Well, I'd a heck of a lot rather see it an S, in which case I still have to ask, but at least I might have a chance. Were I to come before this board with something, this council, with something properly put together, I might have a chance of selling it. But I don't know who your successors might be, five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road. I kind of hope that I don't own that land 20 years down the road, but 20 years ago, I hoped I wouldn't own it now, and I do. So I would encourage you not to adopt the section that says, "We cannot, in any way, shape, or form, in a highway commercial or commercial area have a strip mall," and leave the S where it is. And that's my two cents worth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, council. My name is Scott Humphrey. I live on Nanakwaket Road. And I think just globally, I've got some concerns about the town of Tiverton, about the planning board. And as I see the planning board taking away more and more commercial space, the perception out there in town is that the town of Tiverton does not want business here, and I'm concerned about that. I'm more concerned in the last year, seeing the vacancies along Main Road and Tiverton of businesses that have folded, moved, or otherwise. In my case, a couple of years ago, I spent tens of thousands of dollars defending what I believe my right was, to expand my business. When we had purchased the property, we had residential zoning. At some period after that, it was changed to commercial, and it took me a long time to defend my right to move into that area. We are a small business. We have been here for a long time, and we need cooperation from the town leaders if we're going to remain a viable business. I haven't spoken to a lot of the businesses that have left town, but the consensus is that you all are not supporting business. The planning board is doing the same thing. I, as a resident of Tiverton, don't want to pay more taxes. I would frankly want that burden on business. We need business in this town. We need it badly. Tiverton doesn't have a grocery store today, and to the average person, that tells volumes. I want the town council to consider what I've said tonight and understand that I support Tiverton 100%, and I also understand the value of having business in town. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Foley, 43 Highland Road, on behalf of the Alliance to Preserve Tiverton. The Alliance strongly urges the council to accept the recommendations of the planning board with respect to both the map changes and the text changes that are being proposed, particularly with reference to giving the town the tools it needs to control large-scale retail development. Obviously, I can't comment on the details of the plan that Mr. Spear spoke to. If I heard him correctly, it was filed today, which is just hours before a hearing, which is going to have an effect on it. I would submit that this is not the forum to be discussing individual plans, nor a plan that's been filed hours before a vote. The planning board's role in this town, as in any town, is to deal with overall policy issues and overall development issues, and their task isn't, in a situation like this, proposal-specific. That is, they don't decide on overall recommendations to the zoning plan based on one specific plan that may or may not be proposed. These issues have been facing this town for a long time. There's been a lot of contention. I remember a hearing in this very room where an official from NED said on the record, I believe, "You people have to come to terms with the fact that this mall is going to be built." That was the attitude at that time. It was going to be shoved down our throats, and I'm happy for one to see that there are some efforts being made to give the town the tools it needs to control inappropriate development. The key is the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan says that development in town must respect our rural, small-town character. I submit that that's what these amendments do. I'm concerned for small businesses that feel that they have a tough time here in town. I don't believe that these amendments make it any more or less difficult for small businesses. There may be some other issues that face small businesses. I don't believe that this council or the planning board in the past has been anti-business. I view these amendments as necessary to address a non-conformity between the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinances, and I would urge the council to eliminate that problem and go along with what the planning board is recommending. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley.
Bob Martin, Hilton Street. Been a lifelong resident of this town, and all I keep hearing about is the rural character of the town. In my opinion, I would welcome something like a small rent-and-village to be built off of Souza Road. Currently, we have hardly no retail. We don't have a grocery store in this town. How nice would it be to do business in our own town without having to go to Fall River? I don't know if any of you have noticed, but there's not a street in this town, I don't think, that doesn't have a "for sale" sign on it. I think that's telling me that people just can't afford the taxes in this town anymore. And we need to start embracing some industry, we start, we need to start embracing some of these businesses that want to come into town. Yeah, I don't want the rural character changed either. Do I want the big box? Absolutely not. But a small rent-and-village, I think, would bring in much-needed revenue into the town. Not only that, how about some of our kids? How about them working, high school kids, working part-time in some of these establishments? How about maybe a little grocery store? Doesn't have to be a real major store, but something at least that the townspeople can go to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Roger Benes, 68 Narragansett Avenue in Tiverton. I'd like to speak in opposition to most of this zoning change, because I see it as a furtherance of the philosophy that Tiverton doesn't like business, Tiverton doesn't like malls, Tiverton doesn't like any development, Tiverton has plenty of money to pay taxes. And I think that that philosophy is being contradicted by, as Bobby Martin said, all the "for sale" signs on every street. Whenever I go for a walk, I run out of fingers to count all the darn "for sale" signs on each street. It's ridiculous. And I think that the town as a whole is misinterpreting the philosophy of rural development. Rural development does not necessarily mean rural development for rich people that have lots of money and don't need people to help them with their taxes. Last year, there was a state law that said that you could only have 5.25% increase in the taxes. Gee whiz, Tiverton found the loophole. We had 7.26% increase in taxes, because unfortunately, there's a loophole out there that says if you go out and borrow money, you can exclude that from the taxes. So I guess the state law should be reworded to say that this year, you can only have 5% plus whatever money you want to borrow... to build, cover the entire lot with the building and with parking, and flood its neighbors. Gee whiz, where have I seen that on Main Road, where there's constantly problems with flooding? That's a problem, because Tiverton doesn't have adequate zoning regulations that are enforced. I've also seen new businesses allowed to open with no parking space along Main Road. "Oh, I'm sorry, there is one parking space. The owner needed a place to park." I think it's time to regulate business. You don't need business with huge spotlights so you can't sleep at night. But there's ways to regulate that. You create buffers between business and the neighborhood next to it. You're required that that have a buffer that you cannot see through. If it's trees, and a tree gets knocked down, the regulation has to state that they have so many days to replace the tree, or they pay a fine of so much a day that's enough for the town to go out there and put a tree in from the fines. Please, regulate business. Don't ban it. And don't force people to move out of town, because nobody can afford to live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennis. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard?
Cecil Leonard, 500 Necro, Tiverton. I've lived in town 30-plus years, and I just have a couple of general comments to make. Number one, contrary to some of the statements that there's a "for sale" sign on every street, that's not correct. There are a lot of "for sale" signs in Tiverton, and I would point out to everybody that you can drive to virtually any community in the United States of America at this moment, and you will see a lot of "for sale" signs on a lot of streets. I don't think we're that unique. Also, I think it's important, when we talk about businesses moving out of Tiverton, that is a problem. We do need locally sustainable business for a whole bunch of reasons. But to address the council, the planning board, the zoning group, as if this is an all-powerful group, is ignoring some very basic facts. First off, the state of Rhode Island is generally rated as one of the worst places in the country to do business. All you good folks can't do anything about that. Secondly, as unfortunately the supermarket found out, when you're within five to six miles of a Walmart supercenter, as well as a Stop &amp; Shop, as well as the Shaw supermarket, it's very difficult to compete. That competitive situation had absolutely nothing to do with what the county council does, or the planning board, or the zoning board does. There are some very basic economic situations at work. I would urge that we look at reconstituting North Main Street. That's easy to say, not so easy to do. Those businesses left, not because of evil intent, but because of economic factors mainly located not too far away, with much more strength to compete and offer lower prices. I think we do need to look carefully at how we can support local business, but it's not going to be easy, and I don't think the solution is massive development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Is there anybody else? Mr. Corr.
Madam Chair, members of the council.
Would you just, everybody knows who you are, but just state it again for the microphone.
My name is Peter Corr. I live at 1148 Main Road in Tiverton.
Speak more closely to the microphone.
Peter Corr. I live at 1148 Main Road in Tiverton. The planning board was, this is already the map change. The planning board approached Stonebridge Water and asked which lots it would agree to go to open space. And there was an error made, and Lot 92, on the end of North Brayton Road, that's a small lot out by North Brayton, was not to be made open space, was to remain as it was. I've been requested by the water board to make that known.
Which lot?
Well, I just found that myself this evening. Both of them say 92. It's the one not by the pond. The pond lot could remain open space, or become open space. And it may be that they're 92. It's on the front page, Mr. Tights.
There's two of them that say 96 on North Brayton Road?
North Brayton Road, yes.
Well, there's two of them that say 96.
That's correct. It's the smaller one that says 96. I'm not sure if that's...
So, it's right on North Brayton Road itself?
Yes.
So, it says 96. So, the one on North Brayton Road shouldn't be there?
That's correct. It should not be open space. The water board would like it to remain the zoning that it is right now.
That's their request.
Yes. And if they are both, if it's the same lot, then we'll have to get the assessor to, you know, make the small one 96A, or whatever, so it can be...
They're both identified as Lot 96.
This is why the assessor...
...where the confusion came from.
The assessor is already in the process of changing all of this to plat and lot, without the block and cards in the future, anyway. So, but for the moment, we apparently have two 96s on the same one. Thank you.
Are they both open spaces?
No.
They're not open spaces.
They're both proposed to become open space. Both lots 96.
Yeah. But the smaller one...
The smaller one...
The one that abuts...
That abuts North Brayton Road.
Yeah.
The water board would like it to remain as it is zoned now.
R60.
Which is R60, yes.
And it's kind of a property that's owned by or in the control of the...
It's owned by Stonebridge Water. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corr.
My name is Philip Godek, 77 Lakeside Drive, Tiverton. Godek, G-O-D-E-K.
Would you speak more closely?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
This is regarding the zoning change from waterfront to general commercial. It shows the waterfront coming down from Little Bear Lounge to the north, anything north of Kerry Lane. Well, back in the early 80s, I purchased a building on Main Road, 1019 Main Road, and that's on Lot 27, which is just south of Kerry Lane. That's been a commercial building in a general industrial area, built in the 40s. Back when they did the waterfront zoning, they changed that to R40. I would like it, if it would be possible, to change myself back to a commercial building, which it is, which it has been for 60-some years. And that's pretty much all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Gordon Craig, 57 North Christopher Avenue. Just going to respond to the Tiverton Town Water Department's amendment to, looks like Block 113, Card 96. With regard to that area, that's been publicly noted that there was going to be a vote tonight to change that from residential to open space. Certified cards were sent out to residents within 500 feet of this proposed change. I'd just like to point out that I would like the town council and members to consider moving towards open space for two reasons. Number one, that part, a parcel, is right in front of what is now the new elementary school for the town of Tiverton. And that is a buffer zone, essentially, for the school versus the residential area that abuts the rest of that property. Since this was a public document, and we're here tonight voting on these, I feel that it's in error to come up, come forward, and say that this was not supposed to be on documentation here at this public notice, public meeting. At this point, this should have been clarified before any mailings were done. Two separate mailings with the same card were also inserted in the Secana Times, which were also sent out to all the residents. And I'd just like to point out that I have, in addition to the members of the Brayton Woods Homeowners Association that abut that whole property area, in addition to the people that received, the residents that received these certified letters stating that this was going to take place, we also have about 39 other signatures on a petition that recommending this be moved from residential to open space. So, I urge the town council to continue with their changes that they have proposed tonight. Thank you.
Do you have copies of those petitions, because we will admit those? Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I would just like to note, we did receive a couple of items of correspondence, which I think should be at least referenced in the record.
I agree.
We received a letter from Mr. Philip Godek, who I believe testified here a few minutes ago, about Lot 27. I'm just waiting while they change the tape. That's why I stopped.
Okay.
Okay. Basically, what you heard, same thing, asking that it be changed as well. And I have a couple of comments in a moment, but let me just go through this. We received a letter from Kenneth Mason, Deputy Utilities Director-Engineering of the City of Newport, with regard to Block 121, Card 36, which is proposed to be changed from R80 Residential to Open Space OS. Please be advised that the City of Newport has and maintains an easement through that parcel for a major water transmission main. Enclosed is documentation for the easement. And then, of the letter from the Tiverton Open Space Commission, sorry, with regard to their request that Block 117, Cards 14A, Block 118, Card 40, and in cooperation with behalf of the Nature Conservancy, Block 117, Card 15, Card 21, and Card 24, that those parcels not be changed. I'll read it. "The proposed amendment to the town zoning map and zoning ordinance scheduled for public hearing on March 24 includes a number of parcels that would be rezoned as open space. These parcels were proposed without the knowledge or review of the Tiverton Open Space Commission. It is requested, therefore, that the town council action on the following agenda parcels be deferred pending review by the commission of this change in the context of all town open space land." And then they list the particular parcels. So, I think those should be, and the clerk has them, they can be officially incorporated into the record. If I may just make a couple of comments regarding the letter from Mr. Philip Godek about Lot 27. He may have a very valid point, but there's nothing that the council can do about it at this time, since it wasn't included in the advertisement for any zone change, one way or the other. It's outside of the area that was shown to be changed. So, there's nothing that can be done about that tonight to be addressed. You could apply separately for a map change to the council and refer to the planning board, or it could be dealt with the next time. I'm sure we'll probably be making other map changes in the next year or so. With regard to the letter from the Newport Department of Utilities about the water easement, I don't think that's really relevant. The change to open space will not prevent that water transmission line there, so I don't think it's relevant one way or the other. As to the other requests from the Open Space Commission, and the Nature Conservancy, and the Stonebridge Water Authority, I just want to point out, I guess, for the benefit of the people here, people saying, people coming forward at this point, asking for changes, that's what the whole point of this public hearing is. In fact, the owners who were requesting changes, that their land not be changed on Souza Road, et cetera, that's why we have a public hearing, to hear all the comments and arguments on both sides. So, that's really up to the council as a policy matter, whether you want to withdraw any of these from the consideration. I would point out, I think that you really, state law requires that you do it in the context of the public hearing, if you're going to be doing it, and if you're going to continue the whole thing. If not, it should be done here tonight as part of your amending this before you would vote on it.
Okay, thank you.
And one more thing, just as a, although I'm a lawyer and I'm a solicitor, I'm also a planner, and I just feel the need to comment. There's a lot of concern about the town. There were statements about the town should regulate business, et cetera, and being weather-friendly or not. And I think this, Mr. Berg led off with it, but I think it's here that the comp plan calls for exactly what you're doing, that regulation. You're determining what areas you do want it and not. And in fact, you had a wonderful example here, that public hearing. You've got someone who, whose land is being zoned from commercial to residential, who doesn't want it that way. You've got someone who wants it the other way, that's not going that way. But it's part of what the town has adopted, of its comp plan, of saying, "These are the areas that we want commercial. These are the areas that we don't want commercial." So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard? Mr. Berg?
Thank you. Much has been said about the last-minute submittal of that master plan for the McGinnis property. It's my understanding, though, that by submitting it today, they would be grandfathered in regardless of the zone change, as long as that application is complete. And certainly, Mr. Tights can bear that out. So, I strongly urge that action be taken tonight on these proposed changes.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, I'm going to, go ahead, to save the day.
I'll make this brief. Open Space came to the Stonebridge Water Board and requested of Stonebridge which parcels they would like to donate to Open Space. And they donated all the ones they wanted. That one, the 92 at North Brayton Road, next to the new school, was not one that was donated to Open Space. It was put on there by mistake. And it's unfortunate that it went through the notification of the abutters, but, thank you.
Excuse me, just a clarification. You keep saying Lot 92, but that's Lot 96. Isn't that correct, Lot 96 that you're referring to? Just to keep the record clear here.
Yes, it is Lot 96.
Okay, thank you.
Lot 96 along North Brayton Road, as long as we're clarifying the record. As long as we're clarifying the record. Yes.
I'd just like to know, is there any plans to re-notify the abutters that there was a mistake?
No, there is not. The purpose of the public hearing is to clarify any issues, to correct any errors, to call out attention to the council. But that's why we hold public hearings, and it's nice to see people in attendance at them, and we take their comments seriously, so that we can proceed in an orderly way. Now, I'm going to close the public portion of this meeting. And hearing or seeing no other person that wishes to speak, I will close now the public portion of the hearing and open it up for council conversation and action with regard to these proposals.
Madam President, in light of the letter we received on the 18th from Tiverton Open Space, I'd like to move that Block 117, Cards 14A, Block 118, Card 40, Block 117, Cards 15, 21, and 24 be removed from consideration at this time.
I'd second that motion, Madam President.
When you say you wish to have it tabled?
Yes.
That, so the motion is to table those block and card numbers, seconded by Jay? And all those?
Whoa, excuse me.
Yes.
Sir, we can't even see each other here.
No, it's a little, it's a little hard.
I'm going to step in and add, I think the procedural posture here is that this is a proposed, you have an amendment in front of you. This is a proposed amendment to the amendment before you. So I think what I would actually suggest, although it's a bit...
To take the vote?
Well, I would suggest a motion on adopting the entire thing, and then allow for amendments to that motion would be the parliamentary procedural way to go.
You know, I was going to do this in a more orderly way, but we can discuss this right now because by the time we get through any exclusions that might be made, what I was wondering about is doing it, yes, going through and taking, well, each of the 1, 2, 3, as we go through the zoning map amendments, and then going through the text. Now, do you have a problem with that?
Nope, not at all.
It's just, I think it will be easier to manage.
Sure.
We will take your thought under advisement, but we'll proceed now to consider and act upon the, number one, which is the highway commercial to R-40 residential.
Madam President, I don't think, first of all, let me say that, I don't think the council has been anti-business by any means. However, I'm in favor of retaining that as, as commercial property. We certainly don't need any additional residential property because that's going to generate children, it's going to stuff our schools. That's number one. Number two, as long as we're likely to be considering projects similar to the one that we all condemned not too long ago, then I think we should retain the highway commercial portion of that land on Souza Road. And that's the way I intend to vote.
Madam President? Well? Madam President, I echo the sentiment of Councilman Costa. You know, I don't see myself going, changing that to residential. You know, and I think just the perception of the citizens of Tiverton, you know, I know that just taking one parcel of land and converting it from highway commercial to residential is not going to change the makeup of the town of Tiverton. But I think when we start taking it piece by piece, it does give that perception to the citizens. And I, for one, am not going to start taking one piece of property right now and changing it from any type of highway commercial, general commercial, or anything like that, and switching it back to residential right now. So I wouldn't be supporting that right now.
Well, I'm going to take a contrary view, and that is that the proposal does, is in accord with the comprehensive plan that this town council adopted. And I think all we're doing is make it, making this proposal consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Madam President, we can't hear you back. If you could use the microphone.
I'm sorry. Well, what I said is I would take a contrary view. And the reason for my taking a contrary view is that this proposal has been talked about for a period of years, and it conforms with the comprehensive plan that we recently updated a year ago. And this was one of the areas that we agreed to make in conformity with the comprehensive plan. So I'm not going to go back on my vote at that time. It was a unanimous, unanimous vote at the council. I think this is appropriate. I, for one, don't buy this anti-business. We have struggled to bring business into this town. What is happening, foreclosures and energy costs, et cetera, you can't identify to this council. All we can do is plan for the future of the town. We did that in the comprehensive plan, and by golly, we should carry that out. We are struggling now with the industrial park. We have some good leads, et cetera. There is ample areas for businesses to move if they need to expand into our industrial park. It is now the town's. But this, that's another subject for another day, but this is an easy decision for me. It is acting in accordance with what we agreed to a year ago.
Louise?
I'm sorry.
I just, I just want to echo what Louise just said in terms of the concept that if you oppose a particular plan, you oppose a particular area that makes the town anti-business, that makes the council anti-business. I just don't agree with that, and I've been, I've heard this for years, I heard it before I was on the council. These things don't just pop up overnight. The Planning Board has been working on this, the council has been working on the comprehensive plan. We went through extensive, extensive public hearings. This is something that a lot of thought has been put into, and it's about not just one particular plan, it's about the benefit of the whole town. It's trying to balance having open space, it's trying to, it's trying to balance the small-town nature of the town of Tiverton, along with trying to bring in business that works for the town. This particular plot of land is in, it's currently, whatever, however you want to define it legally, it's a residential neighborhood. If you drive down the north side of it, it is a small-town residential neighborhood. The idea of putting some large development on the other side of that just doesn't seem to work to me. But more importantly, the people who we've charged to doing that, the Planning Board, have looked at this extensively, they made the recommendation that this be made residential. I think that's why the council supported this concept going forward, that's why I continue to support it. As Louise pointed out, there are plenty of places, particularly the industrial park, where businesses looking to expand can go. The idea that simply because of this one decision, that there's this great sweeping signal to people that the town is anti-business, I don't buy. I've seen that in every other town. Here in Portsmouth, you see it when people talk about, even places like Middletown, that have far more retail development. Business isn't just retail development, especially large retail development. There are plenty of other kinds of business that fit in better with what we're looking at, and that's what our comprehensive plan is for, and it specifically addresses this issue. So all we're doing tonight is making the zoning in accordance with the comprehensive plan that we all agreed to, or at least was voted on after extensive public hearings. So that's why I'm going to vote to support this.
Madam President, if I may?
Yes. But I, before you answer, though, I'd like to hear the rest of the council.
Sure.
Still down there, go ahead.
Okay.
I think business has its opportunities in the industrial park. Now that Tiverton is back in control of the industrial park, businesses that want to expand and don't feel they have enough land are going to have ample opportunity, you know, to be able to expand within Tiverton. This piece of land on Souza Road has been talked about since 2000. It was recommended in 2000 that this be changed from highway commercial to residential, and we missed an opportunity then. It's come back to us again to have this rezoned. I, for one, haven't seen the plan that Mr. Spears talked about today that was submitted. I don't think their rights to have that development are going to change by any vote we take tonight. If they've got a plan in prior to a change of this, then that plan has every right to proceed. They're vested, as far as I'm concerned. So I think what we're doing is, has been determined to be in the best interest in being compliance with the comprehensive plan. So I'm going to support changing the parcel on Souza Road.
Yeah, I'm going to echo the previous counselors. I really feel that business has lots of opportunities at the locations in town, and I feel that this particular location is not meant to have business. The, as Brian very aptly pointed out, the entire north side of this is completely residential. There's residential all to the east of it. This is not, and should not be, a commercial zone. As Mr. Martin pointed out, the Rentham Village, Rentham Village is acres of asphalt surrounding single-story buildings. It is not what I want to see in Tiverton, and I don't think anyone in this room wants to see a similar Rentham-type village, especially on this lot. So I want to vote to uphold this particular amendment.
Okay. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard? About, yes, Mr. Costa.
It looks to me like Mr. Carroll and I have lost this battle. However, let me say this. I think we need to do anything that's reasonable to support business, number one. Number two, with regards to the community, the comprehensive community plan, that can be amended also. We've done that already a couple of times. So I wouldn't hang my hat on, necessarily, on the community comprehensive plan. I think what is the most important is to generate tax revenue, and business will give us more without cost than residential will with the cost of sending kids to school. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just believe that I don't, we should be cutting down on commercial space in the town of Tiverton. I think it's nice that we're getting the industrial park back, and we're going to have the opportunity to expand on that, but I just don't, and I don't think that we should be cutting down on our commercial property right now. I think changing that right now will not work. I agree that, you know, the comprehensive plan agreed to the change to that, and it probably the way it should go, but I just don't think that we should be doing it right now.
Okay, thank you. Is the council on this ready for a vote? And on this, just for clarification purposes, the vote should, is the number two on zoning map amendments, changing the zoning district.
Number one.
No, no, it's not one. It's number two, change the zoning district for certain lands south of Souza Road, east of Main Road, west of Fish Road, and north of 24 bounded by R-40 residential to the west, highway commercial to the east, R-60 residential to the north, and R-40 residential. It is Block 92, Card 9, and part of Card 14A.
Can we just let the record reflect that this is number two as shown on the, the part of the agenda packet, not on the advertising? I think that's the confusion.
Okay.
The ad refers to it as number one.
All right.
But...
Sounds good to me.
So, thank you.
So, a motion would be in order on this.
Because I think Mr. Bowen's motion is still on the table.
Was yours a motion, Mr. Bowen?
My motion was to table based on the letter received.
Yeah, I think we, that, we sort of ruled to hold. Okay. I think no one has made a motion yet on this matter, so...
I'll make the motion to change the zoning district for certain lands south. We're just going to obey the language here?
Yes, I think you can, I think you can make the, as stated by the president.
As stated in number two on document Tiverton zoning map amendments.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I think, for clarification, we should all work off the document here, the orange copy and the advertisement.
Advertment?
Yeah. I think that's what we're referring to when we took this parcel first, because it's listed number one here.
That's what we did, well, that's what we used first on the map. That's what we went by, so...
One on the big orange thing.
Right, right. It's fine, the, the reading comes off the white one simply because the ad is a text. As long as everyone knows which part you're doing, and the president has read the full language from the text, which was on the white sheet, I think that's, that's fine. And it can be read again if you, if you want. But I think it's been clearly stated.
Why don't we say the motion as set for, the...
The motion as called for by the president?
Relating to number one on the zoning map amendment, the proposed zoning map amendment, changing the highway commercial to R-40 residential.
So moved.
Your second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. All those opposed, four to two, the motion carries. Moving on, and again, looking at the yellow advertisement, the next item is a map change from waterfront to general commercial for the developed land between Old Main Road and Main Road, north of Carey Lane.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. That's unanimous.
I did.
Now, we come to the open space, the proposed open space amendment, zoning map change.
We have a, now can we reinstitute the motion?
Well, we probably should have a motion to approve, and then we'll take an amendment.
Rather than a motion to approve, I'm motioning that we table.
All the open space.
All these items.
A motion has been made to table all the open space items.
And second. No, these, these particular...
Yeah, wait a minute. You're talking about all, meaning the seven from the Nature Conservancy and the Open Space Commission, or all as in every single one on the...
No, all as in, as in the letter dated March 24.
I would, I would rather do all. I think we have some confusion here, and we need to straighten out this confusion before we vote on any of them. We seem to have some confusion with the Water Department, you know, which, which is bringing up an issue. Rather than pass something that is or isn't, you know, we, we need definition on some of these things, and I don't think this was clear. So I, I think a motion to table all of the open space proposal.
May, may I speak, Madam President, before you?
Yes.
Call for a vote. Two things come to mind here. One is, it's cost a small fortune to advertise this with the inserts in the Secana Times, three weeks, and all the ads to 500 feet from all these many properties at $4.91 or something a pop with the certified mail. Well, I think, I would either take the ones that you're not, that you are comfortable with now, or if you are going to do it, I would continue it to a date certain, so that we don't have to go through all the re-advertising. Again, and since you've taken the votes under each one separately, I think you can do it. I think you could continue the vote on this, as long as you pick the date and time right now that you're continuing it to.
Don, there are only like three maps that need to be excluded.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at this...
If you look at the, on the back page, you have the top one, the third, all of them on the right-hand side. The top map, the third, the third one down, and the fourth one.
I understand that. I'm saying, Open Space has told us that they have some issues with this. I guess the Nature Conservancy has some issues. Who owns the rest of this open space? I mean, who, you know, we know the Water Department, we know the Water Department. When we're looking at this block and card, you know, actually residential to open space... When we're looking at this block and card, you know, actually residential to open space, residential open space, I have no clue whether it be, is it the Land Trust that has that property? Some of it's the Water Department?
I just look at, of all the cards, we, I think we need to act on, it would be the second one, all those multiple small properties. I'd hate to have to go back and have to re-advertise that.
We won't have to advertise it if we continue it.
Can we clarify that if we continue this to a date certain, we don't have to re-advertise?
If you, if you continue the, yeah, if you continue the vote to a date certain, you don't have to re-advertise.
So, we can continue all of them and to take them all at that date certain and not have to re-advertise?
Yes, or you could split them up now and continue part of them, or you could, either way.
Well, a motion has been made to continue, to, we haven't set a date certain, but it would not be the next two weeks, that's for sure.
No, I think, I think if we're going to reschedule this to a date certain, I think it probably should be sometime May or June. Where we can contact, you know, through, through the town clerk.
Say the first meeting in May?
First meeting in May.
Okay.
I, with, it's hard not seeing people. With all due respect to Mr. Bowlen, who's down there at the end somewhere, I just, everyone here, the, the rest of the land is owned by the different entities, but everybody did get a certified mail list of it. The clerk has a list of all the different owners and so forth. And I guess I'd just like to clarify, you're talking about until we could contact them. I'm not sure who else we would contact who didn't show up today.
I'm not, what I'm saying, I'd like a letter from them. We got letters from the planning board telling us what their position is on this. We got a letter from Open Space giving us what their position was on this. I would like a letter from those people who have control of that land being changed to send us letters saying what their position is on the, on that open space issue before I vote to change this. And, you know, some of the things we're doing here, I'm not even sure if this doesn't constitute, when I'm looking at a whole area that's already, and we're taking one parcel there, if that might not even be construed to be spot zoning in creating, you know, an open space zone within a residential zone, an open space zone within, you know, and we're doing this throughout the town in little parcels. If we were extending, you know, a Wheaton Old Woods, Pot and Gray Preserve, and it extended a zone, then I would, I would be a little more inclined to say, yeah, I don't really see a problem with this. But we're picking a lot here and a lot there, because it's already open space. It's open space by virtue of who owns it. To create a zone for that, you know, may, we may be putting restrictions on these people that they maybe don't even know that they're putting on themselves by doing this. And I'm not in favor of doing that until we've had time to talk to all these people and make sure they understand. I mean, you know, they, they may want to trade parcels later on or do something to create, you know, better open space or something, and we're going to restrict or have to go back to zoning changes to do that. So, I'm a little leery about doing that, and that's why I want to see this thing, you know, put on hold for a while until we get everybody squared away with it.
I respectfully disagree, Don. I think we have, we have three cards, four cards, that we have issues with. I think we should take, we can, we can clear up and vote on it tonight and set aside those particular cards.
Is there any negative consequence to not taking action on these, on these other ones tonight and holding them off until we do them all together? Is there any negative consequence to the town?
The only negative consequence is the potential, I mean, the whole reason we're doing this is to add an extra layer of protection to our open space, so it's not, so that there's that delay in that level of protection. That's the only distinction.
What would happen between now and in May 12th if we were to continue it?
Maybe nothing. I don't know. I'm just, you, the question was, is there any negative? You know, what would happen if you didn't do it at all? Most of these properties are owned by entities that are mostly committed to keeping them as open space. Obviously, there still are some questions on some of them, and I guess that's the risk that, but that's, that's the whole point of all of this. And it's to add an extra layer of protection and also to make it clear to people when they're looking at our zoning map, you know, the areas that have been preserved. It's part of our general PR plan too, as far as the open space preservation, to let people see it. And it's also, just so you'll know, Mr. Bowlen, it's not uncommon, a lot of communities, a lot of communities go and take even all the open space in each individual subdivision and zone it separately OS. I'm not advising we go that far at this point without GIS, because it's not, not feasible. But having it all over is not a spot zoning problem in this instance.
Okay.
I would move the question.
Question has been moved. All those in favor of moving the question?
The question is to, I think Don's motion is to continue the entire open space matter to 5/12.
Yes, but you moved the question.
But there was a motion, there was no motion.
No, he, he, he made that motion, Don.
I have Don Bowlen made the motion to table all of the...
I've removed, I've removed this because it's been brought to our attention that if we set a date certain, we don't have to re-advertise. So, the motion would then be to continue to the first meeting in May, which is May 12th.
And I'll second that.
Okay. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand, please. Motion, those opposed. Thanks, Jay. All right, I'm going to move now into the definitions.
Madam Chairman, just for the benefit of the record, what was the vote on that?
Five one.
Five one.
Five one. And I'm going to take up the definitions as proposed in amended section 104. Yes. A and B. That's right. The, I did, the, I want to address a question to the town solicitor with regard to the comment made by Mr. Lester Corey, the footprint area of a single structure, and he suggested taking out and/or the total aggregate structure shall not exceed 40, yeah, square feet.
Madam President, I'd like some clarification on that, because if, the intent of this is that if I had 40 acres, I could only put 40,000 square feet in total?
Yeah, I don't think that's what it was intended to mean. Help us out on that, Mr. Solicitor.
Well, I don't know how much I can help you out, because I didn't draft this. It does, as it reads now, it reads that the footprint of any sigil structure or of the, or of all the structures shall not exceed 40,000 square feet. What that would require, obviously then, is therefore it would be subdivisions and smaller, smaller, smaller-owned parcels of land. It does seem to have a maximum cap on that 40,000. I'm, I'm hesitant to offer a solution off the cuff. I don't know if the, if the planning, the planning board chairman has a suggestion or not. It really should be something that's tied in, it would seem, more to a density requirement. Just like you have a density of so many residential units per square foot of lot area, it seems like there should be that. It's actually what it's usually referred to as a FAR, F-A-R floor area ratio, that you have a maximum floor area ratio of how much commercial space you could have to the lot area. So, the bigger, the bigger the lot you have, the bigger the development you can have. But I don't know that there's been any discussion of a specific ratio yet on the town on that.
Noel, you heard Mr. Corey's, it does read to me, the total aggregate structures shall not exceed 40,000 square feet.
Is it meant to apply only to connected structures?
That was the primary intent. We weren't looking at Mr. Corey's land. As a matter of fact, we will, we've tried to help Mr. Corey in past times by allowing some residential in that highway commercial, but that's another thing. We were looking at along Main Road and those areas for smaller parcels, and we didn't want connected structures. We already have the capability within general commercial, and I think highway commercial, to have more than one principal structure. We're trying to break up the mini malls, the strip malls, into a collection of nice-looking buildings on that area. But again, we don't want any individual structure to exceed the 40,000, and if they are connected, I think the intent of the board was, then we don't want that single structure that has aggregate units in it not to exceed the 40,000.
To exceed 40,000. I mean, 40,000 is the cap for any connected structure.
That is, is my understanding of the intent of the board, and that's what we've been striving to do for quite, quite some time. And again, we have more than one principal structure allowed in general commercial, so you break the strip mall up into some better-looking buildings.
I, I've written language on this, actually, last night, I was working on one for another community. May I request that perhaps the council go on to the other text amendments and give me about a minute or two while you're doing that, and I will come back with some specific language so we could deal with it right tonight.
Okay. Okay, we will take up then the next district, it's Article Four, the proposed changes to district use regulations, section 10, retail businesses.
The suggestion changes to go to single, multi, go to a no versus a special use.
Yes, in general commercial and in highway commercial.
So, it's not allowed anywhere in town? So, it's not allowed anywhere in town?
That's the proposal.
I don't support that. I would still rather, I would rather see it as a special use. That's my opinion.
Okay, and then retail business will be a special, and special, and general commercial, and highway commercial. That's the other change. It's only in C and D as I read this.
I'd rather see it permitted. Why would you call it a special use? Noel, can you explain that to me? Just what would be the logic for making it special use with retail business? If anything, I thought we were trying to phase off.
We're limiting their size elsewhere. I don't, I personally don't see why we should just totally exclude them. If we allow it by special use, they still have to go before the zoning and be able to convince the zoning board that they're going to meet all the criteria for a special use permit.
But if we're, if we're putting language, we're replacing one of for the retail business office and consumer service complex with two separate issues here about size and so Isn't that enough to allow it to be a permitted use with the, with the newer, you know, it's saying, single building no more than this, and multiple structures no more than, or, you know?
So, let it be permitted.
Yeah, I just don't see where we should exclude this totally.
So, you would leave the language the way it was?
Yes, and I would allow them by special use permit in general commercial and highway commercial.
And under retail business office and/or consumer service complex, leave the language the way it is?
Still be permitted.
No, you could, you could have that by special permit rather than exclude them.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to break this out, to move this along. With regard to the proposed amendment in C, how about a motion?
I'd make a motion that we leave the language as currently exists under Article Four, section 10C, and that we, that we leave the, the used to be allowed by special use permit under general commercial and highway commercial zoning.
Okay, a motion has been made by Mr. Edwards to that effect. Is there a second to that motion?
Wait a minute.
Second.
May I just try to clarify? When you say leave the language...
Leave the...
Existing language.
The language over on the left side, supermarket department store?
The motion is to make no changes in 10C.
Because, okay, because that relates to the one that you just skipped over with the 104. C is, in fact, your new 104A. That's what it was changed to.
Single or multiple structure shopping center mall, mini mall, strip mall.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, 104B. That's...
That goes back to that language.
That, that, I just, I, I feel, since I forced you to take him out of order, I just want you to realize that, that, I understand the texting of saying leave him as special use permit, but I think you want to leave the definitional change...
Yeah, I think...
Because it ties, they tie in together. That is the new definition. There, there is no other definition of a supermarket, department store.
Maybe I was concentrating and I misspoke, but the motion would be to leave the, the C, the text language in, but permit it by special use.
That's correct.
No, Madam President, no.
Was to leave as currently exists?
No, I wanted to leave it as currently exists under item C, and to also leave the, leave them to be allowed under a general commercial and highway commercials as a special use permit.
So, you'd be changing D to a special use?
No, I didn't want, I didn't touch D.
We're only on C.
Only on C.
The motion is, is to make no changes in 10C.
Yes.
Okay.
I think we're defeating the purpose of making changes in replacing 104 with 104A and B and splitting those apart if we don't mirror the language and call it the single or multiple structure shopping center mall, mini mall, and strip mall. And by changing it, I have no problem with leaving it as a special use permit, but I agree with Madam President that the language in C should at least reflect the new language of 104.
I do too. I agree with that.
Can we take the two issues separately, or do they have to both be in the same motion? The language change is a special use.
Yeah, yeah.
You can take the new language, but use it as a special use.
Yeah, right.
I have a motion in a second.
Yeah.
So, let's, the motion, can you read it back to us?
No change.
The motion is to leave as currently exists 10C and leave the use by special use under general commercial and highway commercial. I, Council, Edward seconded by Council of Cap, Costa.
Would that keep the original definition, though?
No.
Yes, it did.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't.
Yes, keeps the original.
Right, but doesn't, yes.
Was not the definition to be, to comply with the...
Maybe, maybe I'm not reading it all, but my whole point is, I mean, I don't want to exclude a supermarket, and I don't see it coming up anywhere else.
The language won't affect that.
I understand that, but...
The definition...
Single or multiple structure, shopping center malls, mini malls, and strip malls.
Right. That's just changing the...
Where do we pick up supermarket?
We could just add supermarket.
If you add supermarket to what you're looking to add, I have no problem with it. But what I don't want to do is exclude supermarket in this, in this article.
These developments may include, but are not limited to, a variety of retail shops that specialize in food, quality apparel, hot goods, and services such as grocery stores, department stores, real estate offices... stores, department stores, real estate offices, dance studios, florists, and small restaurants. Now, a grocery store is just another name for a supermarket, isn't it?
That's the new language.
Well, I'm just saying, if we're doing the retail, he's saying that doesn't have a place for it. It just put a supermarket in D. It includes a supermarket in the retail business office and a consumer service complex.
I'll change the language on C, as long as we pick up supermarket someplace else.
I'm just saying, but if we adopt the language, the replacements in 104A and B, a supermarket is included, would be in D.
Listen, I'm getting tired of driving to Portsmouth, so I want to bring some back into Tiverton.
I understand, I understand. But I think it's covered.
Yeah, I believe it's covered also, and that new definition.
So...
We have to have a vote or withdraw the motion.
All right, so I will amend my motion to change the language on C to single or multiple structure shopping center malls, mini malls, and strip malls, and to also leave the classifications under general commercial and highway commercial as by special use permit.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise that, raise your right hand. Okay, unanimous. Whoo! All right. This is a struggle. Coming down now to D. The change is from permitted to special, permitted to special for general commercial and highway commercial.
Okay, can I?
No, let me finish, I guess with this vote on this. Is the council ready for a motion with regard to this?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the changes under 10D to reflect the change in general commercial and highway commercial from permitted to special use permit.
Is there a second?
I'll second for the purpose of discussion. I just had a question on this. Is this change to make this be in compliance with the comprehensive plan, is that the reason behind changing it from permitted to special use?
Basically, it gives you more control.
But is that something specifically addressed? Is that a specific issue in anywhere in the new comprehensive plan? I don't remember.
No, just control.
Well, actually, the comp plan does call for more controls with the review and so forth of the developments, which would be able to be done as part of a special use permit, more than it is currently.
It's just more control. Makes someone jump through another hoop. That's all it is.
So your motion, Mr. Edwards, is to accept the recommendation of the planning board?
To adopt them as proposed.
Okay, all right. Is there a second to that motion?
I said...
You didn't, all right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, four to two. Okay, are you ready now, Mr. D?
Well, the way you broke that up, there's actually one more use table change that's incorporated in Number Two, which is the mixed-use residential, the S in the highway commercial zone. That's on page nine of the document submitted by the planning board, and it's actually in the advertisement, it's the first part of Number Two in that, where it talks of 2D mixed-use residential to S in the HC zone, the very first one under summary of text amendments two.
And that is the only change in that proposal?
Yes.
Under residential uses, mixed-use residential under D, it changed from no to a special use permit in a highway commercial. Is everybody in agreement with that? There's just one change in D.
It allows them to do it by special use.
Yes, mixed-use residential.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. That's unanimous.
Okay. Now, we're coming back to Number One in the text amendments, the article two definitions, and I would propose the following changes. In 104A, the last sentence, which starts with the word "the footprint," would read, would be changed as follows. It would read "the footprint area of any single structure and/or..." The word "of" would be stricken. Then, the words would be "the total aggregate," and inserted after the word "aggregate" would be "footprint of connected." So that that sentence would read "the footprint area of any single structure and/or the total aggregate footprint of connected structures shall not exceed 40,000 square feet."
That's clear.
Okay, there's more.
Yep.
There always is.
A sentence there, remember, I get paid by the word. A period after that, at that point, instead of the semicolon that was there, and a new sentence that reads "for the purposes of this section, any structures located within 20 feet of each other shall be deemed to be connected." Period. And then, the next part, there'd be a capital T with the word "the" to make that the last clause a freestanding sentence. And the reason for that is, there's a loophole in the building code that essentially allows you to connect buildings with empty space, and under the building code, they're two separate buildings, but they effectively are one big huge building, and so this would prevent that loophole. And 20 feet's a good width for a fire lane, anyway. So, then the other change would be in the definition of 104B, in the title, in the second line of it, the sentence would read "the development of an integrated group of commercial establishments," and I'd add, comma, "including supermarkets," comma, and the rest would be left alone, just so there's no question that supermarkets could be in that category as well.
Including.
They're already in 104A, as in specializing in food, but this would make it clear that they could come under either one.
Can I make a suggestion? That your sentence, "for the purposes of this section?"
Yes.
"Any structure located within 20 feet of another structure shall be deemed a connected building," comes at the end of that paragraph.
I don't feel strongly one way or another. I put it there because the last sentence talks about parking and circulation rather than structures, so, but I defer to the will of the council.
I have one question about the last part of that, which is the "associated parking and circulation area shall not exceed 60,000 square feet." Is that per structure?
Yes, that would be a good point.
I think you have to put per structure, because obviously, if you put three structures, you wouldn't have enough parking.
Right.
And they could argue, "I don't have to put it, because you limit me to 60,000."
Sure. Per structure at the very end, after 60,000 square feet.
Now, what I'd like to have you do, Mr. Tights, is just read that again, so that we get it in the minutes.
Sure.
For the purposes of the clerk and the transcriptees.
The last two sentences of the first paragraph of definition 104A shall read as follows. "The footprint of any single structure..." I'm sorry, the last three sentences. Let me start again. And are we going to move it to where?
No, just keep it the way, I don't want to confuse anything more. Just keep it the way you did it.
All right. The, starting with the 1, 2, 3, fourth line down of the first paragraph of definition 104A, be reading "the footprint area of any single structure and/or total aggregate footprint of connected structures shall not exceed 40,000 square feet." Period. "For the purposes of this section, any structures located within 20 feet of each other shall be deemed to be connected structures." Period. "The associated parking and circulation area shall not exceed 60,000 square feet per structure or connected structures." Period. And for definition 104B, the first full sentence would read as follows. "A development of an integrated group of commercial establishments, comma, including supermarkets, comma, exceeding 40,000 square feet that is planned, comma, developed," and then the rest of it would remain unchanged.
Okay, is the council ready for a motion on that?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we adopt the definitions as amended by Counselor, I mean Solicitor Tights.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, turning now to unacceptable streets. Is the council ready for motion with regard to this matter? Nine and 10 on our text, and it's number three in the advertisement, other district regulations, to provide additional standards for unacceptable streets.
I just had one question on this. Did Chief Lloyd get a look at this?
I'll ask the planning board. Chief Lloyd? Noel, can you answer that question? Here comes Chief Lloyd.
Sorry, Madam President, it's kind of tough to hear you in the back. On unacceptable streets?
Did you get a look at this?
No, sir, I did not.
My point is, they're talking about widths and turnarounds, I mean, things that would pertain to the fire department.
Right, we have had problems. We have worked together with the building official and the DPW director, and as Mr. Berg does know, we have referenced through Oz as NFPA Chapter 18, which will tell us the exact size. We do have some problems with T-turnarounds. That seems to be a prevalent addition, that people like, simply because of the size of the apparatus, and it makes it very cumbersome to get them around, very dangerous for backing them up and parked cars and such. Mr. Berg?
The original change for unacceptable streets did include the T-turnaround at the then-fire chief's suggestion. On this change, we did not request an opinion from Chief Lloyd, because the focus was more on the other sections that are emboldened. Hopefully, he'll accept a 25-foot turnaround, as long as the travel width is 20 feet wide.
The ordinance as it exists now has no requirement for any turnaround, so this is, this is...
No, it's 25-foot turnaround.
Okay, and this is making it clear about the 20-foot, the distance, the width of it?
Yes, the width of the improved section, not just in front of the lot, and not improve the other.
Right.
Because then you couldn't get emergency vehicles down there.
Right. And that's something that I know we've had problems with in other communities. People want to pave the area of the lot, or improve the street in front of their house, just to the very corner of it, where they stick in a driveway, and then there's nothing along the distance.
Originally, it was the full frontage of the lot, but it had come up under a condition where the unacceptable street was coming off a town road or a state road, starting with pavement, and it was the progression for that. Now, what's come up are going down the unacceptable street, and then wanting to improve that portion. But it's always been 20-foot travel width and a 25-foot T-turnaround. The idea being the T-turnaround would be at the end of the lot frontage. So they'd come out of the driveway, be able to make the turn, and go up, which I think originally, that was okay.
At the end, at the far end of the front end of the lot?
Far end.
At the far end of the lot frontage?
Right. In other words, you'd have to have enough room in your lot to make that T-turnaround. Otherwise, you can't get the emergency vehicles out of there.
The construction standards...
Construction standards have always been the same, pretty much 15...
It refers to plowing, and on a private road, it's not plowing by the town, it's plowing by them.
Yes. Yes, it states there that it always remains private.
What, do you remember if I jumped back to the handle?
I'm done.
Okay. And on an unacceptable street, if you own the property on the right side, and you've got 200 feet of frontage on the right side, you have to do the improvement all the way to the whole 200 feet? That's what I'm trying to get the clarification.
The planning board has waived that requirement, or in the case where it's part of the ordinance, have recommended a variance to the zoning board, where it just doesn't make sense. See, when this first came up, it was on very small, platted lots, and platted but unimproved streets. So where, as I say, where it doesn't make sense to go that, to that extent, then we recommend a variance.
We have several, several paper streets in this town, right? So in reality, if somebody wanted to put a house 600 feet in on a paper street, they have to actually make it 20 feet wide?
Yes.
With a five-foot, five-feet clearance on each side, and then according to this ordinance, they would, according to this, if they had 200 feet of frontage on that paper street, they would still have to clear that 200 feet of frontage and still do the 25-foot turnaround.
Yes. If they were additional, if the unacceptable street were platted and went beyond that lot, yes.
If it went beyond their lot?
Yeah.
They would still have to do that.
Right, where the board in the past has recommended the variance, where it didn't go beyond that lot, and it made, and it was a large frontage lot, it made no sense to go all the way to the end of the lot. It was sufficient that there were a 25-foot turnaround beyond the driveway.
And then the driveway would have to be the 20 feet with five feet on either side, same 20, giving you the same 30 feet? If the driveway becomes part of the T...
Well, in one case, it may be. That's still coming up.
Well, I'm just saying, if you're calling the driveway part of the T, it should have to be the same width as the...
No, no. The 25-foot extended beyond the driveway.
Right, but the driveway then becomes part of the T?
It can today, but not tomorrow, because depending on how the situation is, and that's why I'm trying to get the clarification, because today, if somebody has 200 feet of frontage, and you can look at it and say, "Well, today, it's fine. You don't have to clear the whole 200 feet of frontage."
It's always been in the ordinance for the total frontage, but as you just said, we have a lot of unplatted streets, and you have to kind of approach those on an ad hoc basis to see what makes sense. You go up to, what is it, Stafford Heights?
Pick up anyone who named one of those thousands of them.
Yeah, West Side, Stafford Heights, that's where it first came up. And you only have 30-foot platted street there, and we had these tiny, tiny lots. So, another case came up over on Sunset Drive... So, another case came up over on Sunset Drive. Didn't make sense to require the total frontage, or to extend beyond it. And we, so we try to get something that we can make it safe for any case, and the board has, because of the applicant requests, that they don't have to go the full length, or whatever makes sense. It certainly, if you're 600 foot in, on an unacceptable road, you've got to improve the whole length to that lot, and then it makes, whatever makes sense at that lot.
But somebody can do a 2,000-foot driveway.
Uh, maybe not, it depends. It depends. We've had, there have been circumstances where we've rejected things that would be You can't just do that and not allow emergency equipment to get to the residence, no matter what seclusion they want. You can't do it.
The whole, the whole purpose of putting in the unacceptable street provision was to allow people to be able to build in plotted developments that didn't have roads, by putting a gravel road.
Right.
But we, even when we did this, we did it so that you were going to be able to get equipment and to turn it around. Now, the T-issue, to me, is, I know what you're saying, if I put the driveway at the start of my lot, but technically, I can't get a building permit unless my frontage is at least 100 and some feet, or whatever the zoning requirement is, is on that street, so I've got to do at least 100 foot of the lot. Or 120, or whatever the requirement is in the zone I'm in.
Yeah, but they're saying, you've got, according to this, you've got to clear the whole, you're supposed to clear the entire frontage.
Well, what I'm, what I'm saying is, in order, but in order-
To the end, to the boundary, to the boundary of your lot.
Well, and I understand, no, but he said, he said that they've made exceptions where someone puts a driveway at the beginning of the lot, they make them go at least 25 foot beyond it. I'm saying that depending on what the lot is, in order to get a building permit, if the zone you're in calls for 140 foot of frontage, 150 foot of frontage, you have to create the road at least 150 feet, because you can't get a building permit unless there's a road in front of that frontage. That's my understanding of the code.
Also, if you have a series of lots along this unacceptable street, then it makes sense to make that owner pay for the improvement for the full frontage, so the next owner just picks up the cost in his.
For the full frontage, all the way.
Yeah.
Yes, because why should the next owner pay for the improvement on, in front of someone else's lot?
So if you've got 500 feet of frontage, you've got to, you've got to do the entire 500 feet of frontage, that's what this says.
If you have another lot adjoining it, that's-
Another lot adjoining yours.
Yeah, well, why should the other one pay for it also?
I can understand the sensibility of that. Why should the next guy have to pay to get half of your lot cleared?
Exactly.
Okay, folks.
Glad I brought that up.
Uh, yes. How about a motion?
I, I'm not ready. I have a lot of questions.
Okay, Don, are you ready for motion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm moved to accept the language as proposed.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carry, anybody opposed?
I do it this time.
Okay. We'll catch you again next time.
Next time, you vote.
Okay, now, this is, I hope, an easy one. This is a amendment to Article 18, which makes, as I read it, one change. The fee for the issuance of a zoning certificate shall be set by the Tiverton Town Council.
Oh, that's a tough one.
So moved.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I don't know about anybody else, but I'd like to just stand up for two minutes-
Yes, I'm agreeing with you.
Before we keep going with this meeting. These are without the most uncomfortable.
They are, they're crippling chairs.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to resume this meeting. And, oh, thank God for water. I'm willing to share this with anybody. Hey, Paul, this is expensive stuff. I'll have to reimburse you. Alrighty, the next item on the agenda is a request by J&amp;A Landscaping for a licensed excavator's license renewal.
Motion to approve, needing all legal requirements.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously.
We're missing our secretary.
Oh, wait a minute.
Nobody recording this. They left.
Think you may, think you may have to repeat that.
Oh, you taking this? Okay. We got, we got somebody down there.
That's all right, that's all right, continue on, continue on. See that?
Okay.
She's all over it.
All right. I don't have to repeat it then, Leona?
Come on, Doris.
Leona's got it.
Okay. The next item, and before we get to the next item, I understand that we have to issue three separate licenses under state law.
That's right.
So the motion-
Motion to grant a Class F liquor license for August 1st, August 2nd, and August 3rd. Individual licenses for the annual feast parish to St. Teresa's.
Second.
So individual licenses would be issued. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. It's hard to see. Mr., appointments and resignations. We have a request by Mr. Nearpass to be reappointed to the wastewater management committee.
Make a motion that we accept, Mr. Nearpass.
Second. How's that one?
Okay, it's a joint motion by Mr. Edwards and Mr. Boland, seconded by Mr. Carroll, that he be reappointed to the wastewater management commission. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
So we'll have to see Mr. Nearpass. So, once again, to come back out of retirement to join us, thank you, Chris.
All right, now we move to the new Secana Bridge Advisory Committee, and as you know, we passed a resolution at our last meeting, or the prior meeting, with regard to creating this commission, and detailing the composition of the appointees. So, we have the, we have four members, but only three members live within 100 feet, 1,000 feet of the bridge. So, are we ready for a motion on that?
Motion to appoint the new Secana Bridge Advisory Committee as proposed.
Second.
With the three members, three public members, Franklin Reposa, Henry Curran, and Glenn Brown. Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. With regard to our resolution, as I recall, they were for one, two, and three-year terms. So that, would it be appropriate to say that we'll do this in just the order given?
In rever, oh, in the order in which they came in? You know what you-
Franklin Reposa would be one year, Henry Curran, two years, and Glenn Brown, three.
Yep.
Can the minutes show reflect that?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, we also have a member of the town council to appoint.
Make a motion to appoint Joanne Aruda.
Is there a second to that motion? All those in favor of that motion?
Brian, did you say?
I didn't say.
Oh, I can't, she'd kill us. I'm worried about feedback.
Yeah, I'll, I'll-
She's done here.
I'll second it. That's right, anybody who takes a vacation from this deserves appointment.
Cast one vote, Madam President, will you cast one's vote?
I second the motion. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Two. All those opposed to that motion?
All those abstained?
All those abstained. I believe the motion carries.
She'll learn to come to all the council meetings.
That's right.
I'm brave, but not that brave.
Now, we, next appointment that we have is for the establishment of the Stone Bridge And on that, I suggest we, we continue this to our next meeting, because we don't have any public members who have, I think they're readying correspondence to the clerk, but they haven't come forward yet.
Motion to continue to the next meeting, second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Mo, any, okay, unanimous. Now, coming to our transfers, here we go. We have Mr., the DPW request for $30,000.
Good evening, and thank you, Madam Chairman. As far as the landfill cover, the landfill cover account, we started with roughly $50,000. We've spent 41. There's $9,000 left over. We have to rent a big drum chipper to chip up all of the wood debris and big trees that have been piling up for the whole year. This is usually done at this time, we take those chippings, mix them with mulch, and we use them for landfill cover. So we're trying to regenerate and use everything that is dropped off. So this $30,000 is a request to carry over funding. I believe there's $40,000 left over to be carried over. We're only requesting 30. That should us, should get us through to the end of the fiscal year, not only for landfill cover, but for rental of the portage on, and to buy a lot of seed, and landscaping stuff for plantings also.
I make a motion that we approve the carry forward in the amount of $30,000 from account 553442, from account 553442 from fiscal, previous fiscal year.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now you have another one.
Yes, I do, Madam Chairman. This second one is to carry over funding from last fiscal year for paving and drainage. We're on our third year of a paving bid. Three years ago, the bid came in from Keating, to the tune of about $54 per ton. That's in place, rolled and on the street. At that particular time, oil was at $54 a barrel. Right now, oil is at 110, and I anticipate the bids coming out that would start on July 1st to be in the $75 to $80 a ton category. So any money that I can possibly spend and get on the roads before June 30th is going to cost us $45 a ton, and I believe after June 30th, it's going to be close to double, could be double that.
Move to release $86,752.06 from account 554794 paving.
Second.
All those in favor of Mr. Boland's motion, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Chief Lakey.
Madam President, members of the council, I respectfully request to transfer $40,000 from the salary account to the police overtime account.
Make a motion that we approve the transfer of $40,000 from the police salary account to the police overtime account, as requested.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
The, also from the salary account, I'd like, like to transfer $8,050 to the police educational incentive account, which is a contractual item.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, Mr. Cook, Gary Rose, brief update. Are you still here?
Thank you, I, we just wanted to, just wanted to update the council on the fundraising activities that we have going on right now. Basically, we're kicking things off tonight, and I'm going to ask Debbie to hand off, hand each of you some literature that we're going to be sending out to people in the town and, and through the school systems. The first event that we wanted, that we have planned is April 20th, 2 o'clock at the Tiverton High School. We're having the Harlem Wizards come in, and they're a comedy basketball act, similar to the Harlem Globetrotters. They'll be coming up to the high school and performing at that time, and hopefully we'll be able to pack that. They came here about two years ago, and we, we packed the house with that. The papers that Debbie's handing out to you is, we're, we're going to afford you folks here at the town council to be the first people to be able to donate to the, bring back Bogomash Park program that we have going. This is the donate a brick, I mean, buy a brick and, for a donation. Hopefully, each of you will be willing to be the first people to, in Tiverton, to be able to contribute to our efforts here. So we wanted to make sure that you were the first people that were going to be able to do that. Some of the other fundraising ideas that we have, we have, as we mentioned to you before, you can purchase a tree for $600, which will have the name plate on the tree to go along with that, a park bench for $1,500, and we're actively seeking some corporate sponsorship to assist us in this as well. We're also planning a carnival, a concert, a dinner dance, and a celebrity softball game coming up this summer. Those dates and times will be announced, will come before you again, and let you know about those. We do have some other events that are planned, but these are the ones, this is what we're working on right now. We just wanted to update you folks, so, like I said, hopefully you guys can send that in, and we'd love to have you guys be our first contributors to our park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Goncalo.
We submitted solicitations for a new trailer for the maintenance department, and we only received one bid. And I'd like to be able to get the council's approval to exercise the bid and award the contract.
Is the council ready for a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the award of the dump trailer bid to Wright Trailers in the amount of $52.95.
Second.
Can I ask where that company is located?
Route 6 and Seacombe, right? Route 6 and Seacombe? Maybe?
It's in Seacombe, yes.
Yeah, Route 6 and Seacombe.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Anybody opposed? No. Alrighty. Next item is a request to, I guess, renew the contract for Picassett Hill Cemetery. Mr. Goncalo?
The contract for Picassett Hill Cemetery has been negotiated. It's been approved by the Picassett Hill Cemetery Commission, and I'm looking to award the contract to Mr. Helga.
So moved.
Is there a second? Oh, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Motion carries unanimously. And Jerry Holjak, tax collector, has a request that we waive the bid for the printing of the tax bills and processing tax rolls.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, town administrator, do you have any announcements, questions, or comments?
Yes, I do. The first announcement is I'd like to thank Police Chief Lakey for awarding gifts and presents to, at the, pardon, Gray Easter Egg Hunt that was held this past Saturday. The tax collector's office will be open on Saturday, April 5th, between 9:00 a.m. and 12:30 p.m., for the purpose of fourth quarter tax collections.
Jim, can you speak up? Jim, can you speak up? Move closely.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Should I go back?
Yes. Chief Blakey.
I'd like to thank Chief Blakey for attending the Easter Egg Hunt and awarding prizes at the Easter Egg, Easter Egg Hunt at Pardon Gray. I might add that the chief was in full uniform. DPW will be making moratorium area repairs in the next future to damage catch basins and their frames on Judson Street and catch basin and drain lines on Bottom Street and Chase Avenue. The town treasurer submitted the application for the twenty million dollar bond for both Picasset and Fort Barton schools. That's all I have. Thank you.
Council, announcements, comments, and questions?
I just had a quick question. We're about to deal, get some information on the, on the issue of the flooding from the quarry. I just wanted to ask if, temporarily, if there's something that we can do through DPW, some, some kind of a barrier or something, because obviously, there's going to be some, some issues through the town. We're trying to get the owners to take responsibility and correct it, but in, in the interim, I mean, it was extremely bad, as most people know, in that last storm. If there's something that we can do temporarily to at least lessen the effects so that we don't have two or three feet of water all over that road, I don't know if it's technically something we can do, even a barrier or something.
I would, I would let the DPW director address that one.
Brian, we, we've looked at that a couple of different ways. The water sometimes make, it makes it all the way across the road, in which case, if it gets too deep, I'm going to have to close the road. And the second issue was, makes it halfway, but then cars going through it splash the other lane and cause an ice lick the whole length. Either way, I don't think anything's short of shutting down the road if we come through another situation like that where we can't put salt and sand down fast enough where it isn't getting washed away, it's turning to ice. Hopefully, the, I can't see a remedy of barriers stopping the, the water from going across the road. I think it'll just go under or between them, and we just really have to control traffic to protect the safety of the traveling public. There was an accident last period. I think it happened on a Monday night, caused by a car fishtailing and heading off in the oncoming traffic. Fortunately, there's no one there and plowing into the embankment. It is a safety issue, and with the height of the water being higher than the road, I really don't know how to stop it other than, you know, stopping the traffic, which is going to be a real pain in, in the traveling public's commitment to using the road.
But even if we ultimately could find some way to charge this to the owners, is, there's nothing we can do to mitigate it in the short term, just so that we don't keep running into this until it's resolved?
Resolved. I, I am keeping a running total of all men, equipment, and time and resources that we are using, and my intention would be to forward it to the town administrator to bill Viking for taxpayers' money that's used in us maintaining it. But other than remedying the situation, and I've, I've met with the owner, I think he has a, an engineering firm on board that are looking at it. It's a difficult situation, as you know, but the road comes first and the traveling public comes first, and I think we're going to have to look at it much more carefully if it happens again. Fortunately, the weather's getting warmer. It may stop the icing issues, but the flooding issues still may be there in the, in the future.
But I've been asked this question, there's just nothing we can do in the short term?
I don't see anything. We, we can't go on private property. I can't put a pump in there and pump it across the street because it's wetlands. I can't build a covert across the street because it's wetlands, and really, the problem lies with the owner. It's his responsibility to control that water. So, other than going on private property and pumping it down to Trout Pond, which probably need D E M approval anyhow, there's no solution that I can come up with to adequately handle the issue other than, you know, closing the road if it becomes absolutely necessary. Brian?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Alrighty, coming now to the town solicitor, has a few comments, I believe.
Yes, and most of these are just for information and housekeeping, but the first one is that memorandum about, this was phrased as referral to the zoning board for scheduling a show cause hearing, but because the license is issued by the building inspector and goes to zoning board, it doesn't even have to go through the council. That's already been set for April eighth is the show cause hearing as to why the license should not be revoked. And there's also, I believe, a municipal court date set for another week or two beyond that, and I'd ask the DPW director to make sure, or the town administrator to make sure I get those cost figures before the municipal court hearing, because we will certainly, in addition to fines, seek restitution, just as we would if, you know, if someone was a vandalism, broke a window and whatnot, we'd seek restitution. If the town has had to pay costs, we will seek those as well as any fines. And hopefully, the, the owner will be serious about fixing the problem. I did receive a call from a different attorney today purporting to represent the owner, but when I called him back, we missed each other.
Do we want to call license?
Number two, Born Mill. This was before you last year in May. You adopted certain ordinances. There's two things that's going on. One, a lot of that was conditioned upon the approvals going through for Born Mill so that, the town was concerned that we would accept streets, the project would never be approved, and then we'd be stuck with them. That hasn't happened. The project is going forward. All the approvals are in place. They're, they're getting set for their final approval before the planning board, and so we were just cleaning up some of the language, including the exhibits here. And basically, my concern, and it's been, it's been dealt with now, if you look at the first one, which is K two A, it doesn't, they all have similar exhibits, but the idea is that to make sure that the piece of Mill Street that stayed public is subject to the maintenance and operating agreement that Born Mill LLC and its successors, they, they will in fact be responsible for maintaining that part as well as the other part. The other thing that makes a difference, if you're wondering what's the difference between Exhibit A and Exhibit A one, Exhibit A has Mill Street going all the way into the pond, out to the state line, and actually also through the wall of one of the buildings. Exhibit A one has a little bit smaller description of the part of Mill Street that will be privately owned but open to the public, and has it ending at the shore and not going through the wall of the building. That's the confusion why we needed to do it. Otherwise, it's basically no change from what you've done, so I was asking that you ratify it, and I, I think you could do it with one vote if you want. If you have any questions about the individual things, I'll just go through. K two A is the, the street acceptance. That was where you accepted the whole street. K two B was the abandonment, where you abandoned most of it, keeping the small part. K two C is the key thing, the operation and maintenance agreement for the part, where they're going to be responsible for all of it. K two D is a pump station access easement. This is, a pump station's going to be on right next to the public part of the road, but it will be privately owned, so we've got the easement to get to it. And that's, I think, it. I'm sorry. K two, I'm sorry, there are a couple. There's K two E is a sanitary sewer easement, and that's just the easement, so our sewers, that runs all the way through the property. It runs along Mill Street and then takes a left out to State Avenue so that we'll have access to the sewers that they are going to put in. So, if there are no further questions, I would request a motion to ratify these final documents.
I make a motion that we ratify the ordinance for street acceptance for Mill Street. We ratify the ordinance for street abandonment for Mill Street. That we ratify the Mill Street Improvements Operations and Maintenance Agreement between Born Mills and the town of Tiverton. That we ratify the pump station access easement. And that we also ratify the sanitary sewer utility easement.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand, please. All those opposed, motion carries.
Next item is number three. This requested resolution of the council to send to our legislators, requesting a change to state legislation regarding tax sales. As you recall, we submitted legislation last year. This was to deal, we, we dealt with some of that land today, or we didn't deal with it. We postponed the zoning on the Stafford Heights lots, but we're trying to clear up title to that. Last year, we had two sections, one of which was passed by the General Assembly, but one of which was not. In the light of all the foreclosures and predatory lending, they're, they're very leery about foreclosing rights of redemption without notice. So, we're going back this year, and I'm trying a little bit of a different tack, which is to amend section forty-four dash nine dash eighteen point three, which is what we got in last year about assigning it to the Tiverton Land Trust, which would give them the right, if there are lots that are unimproved, so this is no house or anything on it, and contain one half, less than one half of the required minimum lot area required by the zoning ordinance to construct a dwelling unit. And if the town council shall have identified it as worthy of preservation as open space, then they have the right to proceed in the same manner as the treasurer, et cetera, would proceed under the other chapter. And that other chapter is a different section there, which I've included just for your information. It's foreclosure of the rights of redemption on account of constructive abandonment by the city of town. It still means that the land trust will have to go to Superior Court to foreclose the right of redemption of the property, but I think it will make the, assuming we can convince a Superior Court judge, it will make it a bit easier and less costly on the notice requirements. We won't have to do a lot of genealogical studies to find owners fifty, a hundred years back on these little coupon lots.
For the purposes of this record, I want to recuse myself with regard to anything involving the land trust, and I would ask Mr. Bowlen to proceed with regard, with regard to this matter and its discussion.
I, I have nothing, I, I don't, that's all I have on it. Unless anybody has any questions, I'd be looking for a motion and a vote to adopt the resolution, which would then be sent on to our state representatives.
How does this benefit us?
Well.
What's the benefit of transferring our rights to the land trust?
Well, that was already done last year. What, what it does is, these lots are picked up by the tax assessor as they're sold for, and have been for some years, but they're still subject to a right of redemption. So, if someone went around and, and got enough assignments of rights of redemption and, and bought the deeds from other people and tried to make a claim, we could potentially have development there. So, at some point, you need to foreclose the right of redemption. Right now, that's a fairly costly process with notice. What this does, it allows it to be done. It would still be with notice, but without quite the same, as I said, genealogical research and so forth. We'd hopefully be able to do it by publication, so to be able to preserve these as open space. And it's just a mechanism. It's, it's in the hands of the land trust, and we're utilizing their volunteer efforts in this. And I'm sure, you know, at some point, we, they'll discuss with you about, there will be costs involved in doing that, but that's part of the cost of, of the property and acquiring it and so forth, and we're trying to keep that to a minimum, because at the moment, they only have it subject to that right of redemption.
Is there anyone prepared to make a motion on this resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution of the town council in March twenty-four, two thousand and eight on this matter.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes. Three in favor, one against, one abstention. Thank you, Mr. Bowlen. Town Solicitor, you want to keep going?
Next item is model contract. You had instructed me at the previous meeting to prepare a, a model employment contract to be dealt with when there's no, no current applicant in front of you, and so I've tried to fix a few things that have long troubled me, such as getting rid of bi-weekly, since none of our employees get paid twice a week, but also trying to put in things about the, the hours, the comp time that was discussed, and the, the leave policies and the termination and the, the issues that you raised. It's basically just for distribution at this point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I just had one comment on this. I mean, you seem to incorporate a lot of stuff that we have brought up, but the health insurance issue, you're still putting in there the fact that we will compensate people not to take our insurance. I just.
Well.
Okay, reason for that.
As I was listening to the discussion, it appeared to me that a consensus of the majority of the council wanted to keep that in there, even if they weren't sure about the number, so I left it in there. That, that's why.
But we, it.
That's why this is. It's just a model.
Yep, we discussed the whole thing, and any questions of that nature will come up and be, I'm sure considerably discussed.
I'm just throwing this out there as a. I'm running it up the flagpole to see if you salute it or shoot at it.
I, for one, was very glad to see the model contract so expeditiously given.
Next item is distribution of some documents regarding Carvello versus New England Gas, the Bay Street contamination case, and you've got three, three items here. One of these is a motion, is a motion of New England Gas, a so-called emergency motion, where they were trying to postpone the trial. And the item B is the order of the district court in response to it. Their efforts to postpone the trial were not successful, but the court has once again separated Tiverton out from the first trial. Originally, we weren't going to be part of the first trial. You have to remember, we, we've been sued. We, we are defendant in this. As a third-party defendant, New England Gas has sued us for contribution. That's where we were at the beginning of the case. Then, there's what's called in law compulsory counterclaim. If, if we don't make our claims back when we answer their suit, we lose them. So, we brought our counterclaims, and the judge said, okay, well, then those should be tried in the very first case where liability would be tried by the hundred and fifty residents against New England Gas. Now, just a week ago, the court's saying, well, nope, Tiverton, your stuff's going to go back to the second or third phase is where our trial would be. So, these are public documents. I wanted to get them out there for your information. As I said, we didn't draft the motion. Obviously, it's the other side's motion, but it's hard to understand the order unless you see the motion as well. So, as it stands now, we're, mediation is scheduled to take place later this week, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, and we'll be talking about that at number six. And trial is still set for the end of April, April twenty-third or April twenty-fourth. And all indications are that the judge has no intention of postponing that at all, so. Number K five C, this is a cover page to about a two-inch stick stack of bills from Capitol Court reporting for depositions in the case just from January fourth to March sixth. You'll remember that we were in depositions at town Tiverton. We actually had to have our attorneys in two depositions a day throughout December. So, the good news is that the legal fees are less, because in December, you had both the legal fees and the depositions. the legal fees and the depositions. From January to March, we didn't have to attend most of these depositions, so the legal fees are less. The transcript fees are enormous, they're $47,804.20 just from January 4th to March And I had a picture, had a picture here of Jeannie Scott standing next to a pile of the transcripts. It's a very large pile. We've got about, if you, if you recall, wood is measured in cords, I think four by, by eight by eight. We got about a half a cord of transcripts, which would probably be a good use for them someday to burn them, but at the moment, they're necessary for the litigation. Even though we don't have to attend the depositions, obviously, we have to know what the witnesses are going to say. D is, oh, actually, D and six are the same thing, schedule special town council meetings. As I indicated, the mediations are supposed to go all day into the night, Wednesday, ditto on Thursday, and quit by 2:00 on Friday. I don't know if there's going to be any progress or not, but if there are any developments, obviously, the Town Council will need to be able to, to deal with them, to consider them and vote on them. So as previously discussed in executive session, I'm asking that you schedule executive sessions for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, Wednesday and Thursday at 7:00 p.m. and Friday at noon. I don't know that we'll need any of them, or we could need all three of them. I'm sure we won't get all seven counselors for all three of them, but hopefully we'll be able to get a quorum for as many as we can, as we need. And obviously, I hope that we'll be able to settle this case, so I hope there will be a need for at least one of those meetings for the council to vote on a proposed settlement that we come out of mediation with.
Is there some mechanism that you're going to use to notify us, whether we're needs or not?
Yes. What we will do is the, I think the default will be, Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the default will be you're not meeting. If the meeting's going forward, if we need you to have the meeting, we will try to reach you. We've got cell phone numbers. Do people use text, do people respond to text messages on their cell phones? No? Okay.
My daughter does that.
It's actually a very good way to do it. I mean, email is kind of hard if you're not home and so forth. We'll do it by phone. There's only seven of you.
If the town clerk gets a call Wednesday afternoon, or Thursday afternoon, which, you know, to schedule a meeting, the open meeting law will come into play.
We posted them all.
They're all posted?
Okay.
Okay.
That's why I'm having you here now. It's intending that we will post these meetings.
Fine.
I'm just saying to you, as a default, for you personally, you wouldn't need to show up, we will cancel the meetings unless you, unless you hear otherwise.
If they're posted, that's what I was.
But yeah, the intent is, the intent is to have them posted on the Secretary of State's and post, they're already posted at Town Hall.
And open meetings.
And the, are they already on the Secretary of State? Okay. So that there's no question that we're covered, for just that reason. I mean, we might conceivably be covered under the emergency exception anyway, but since we do know it's coming, I thought it would be best to do this and hopefully.
But the emergency session does, you can't take a, unless the public health, you know, mess.
Right. But anyway, we'll cover it this way by having the sessions. As I said, I'm hoping that at least one of these will be needed, because I'm hoping we'll reach some settlement, but.
Is there an exception to the open meetings law for this kind of court session type work?
Not, not to the notice, Mr. Costa. There's an exception in the sense that we can, you know, meet confidentially, but the notice doesn't have any exceptions at all, other than emergencies. And emergencies are supposed to be both unforeseen, as well as involving a public health safety thing. So technically, since this isn't unforeseen, we know it's coming, we should, we should post it and let people know. And that's all I have for open session.
Okay.
And more for.
We have, we have come to the closed executive session portion of our meeting, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to enter into executive session under 42465A2 litigation.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
And remain in executive session under 42465A5, acquisition and disposition of Town Hall property.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.
And further continue under 42465A1, personnel.
Second.
For Garth Ames Code Enforcement Officer, notice given.
All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand.